Good evening. It being honored about 7:00 PM, the Foxborough Planning Board meeting will come to order. And just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded and may be open to Zoom as well. Okay, first thing, planners' report?
I apologize, I don't have a written report.
It's okay.
I had a meeting today with Terry Lawton from Oakdale Farms, and they are going to be filing for a site plan review. They have, they're going to be constructing new buildings. They have buildings that are in disrepair, and so they're getting ready to file for a site plan review for that. It's, I saw the architectural renderings, and it looks really nice. So it's gonna, they're gonna do a good job.
Where's this again?
On North Street, one farm.
Yeah, she, I think she took it over from her father.
Yeah. So she said that the farm stand, the building with the farm stand is very, very old, and it's in much better shape than the buildings that were built that were newer.
Really?
The wood was, you know, was better quality, apparently. So it's the newer buildings that are being torn down and replaced.
She just redid her parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that we talked about is consulting with Scott Shippey, which I, you know, I know that they have, but to make sure that they do have the amount of parking that is necessary for what they're planning to do. So that's where that stands. Another thing is that we've set up a meeting for next week for the people that bought the buildings on 3137 South Street, and showing us what they intend to do, I guess, with the empty lot, and then the duplex that they intend to tear down. So when I have more information, I will share it with you, with everybody.
Anything on that house on 140 that I've reached out to Scott Shippey on, I believe other members of the board have, that has like 10 broken-down cars and?
I don't have information about it. I know that the Board of Health and Scott have been working with several properties that have issues. I'm not sure if that's one of them, but.
I would think it would have fallen under the category we just passed at town.
It exactly does.
There's shipping containers in the front yard, cars.
I will find out some more.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
The shipping container's a separate one. That's closer down to.
It's by me.
It's 180.
Right by the corner of Van Dorn and 140.
Yeah, on the, facing it on the right side.
Yeah, facing Van Dorn, it's on the right.
Yeah.
That helps right in the corner.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, I will, let me write that down.
Thanks, Gabby.
So we have some minutes to approve.
That was active subdivisions, I think, wasn't it?
Paige would like to add, Scott has sent a warning letter, and they have an amount of time to address. They have to follow the process, so it stands up in court.
For which address?
140.
Have we received a response?
What number, Main Street?
So it's still in the works.
No, it's gotta be the 180.
It's 180. Okay. There you go, Gabby, cross it off the list.
Thanks, Paige.
Active subdivision?
I don't have any, anything.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 8.
Second. Any comments or anything else on the June 8 minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to roll call since Tom is on Zoom?
Tom can't vote tonight, right?
They're right, he cannot vote.
He can vote on this.
Oh, yeah, because he's not.
He's not sworn in, sorry, Tom. Sorry, Tom. He looks upset.
Yeah, he does. We have a request for release of a performance guarantee at 29 Wall Street.
So we have received a letter from Stefan Fry. All the, all the conditions have been met. The last thing that needed to be done was submission of the ASPIEL plans, and they have been. So I would recommend that the, that the board release all funds being held as performance guarantee. He submitted a $50,000 bond, but there's some interest. So if you could please vote to release all the funds.
Not until he tells us what meat market's going in there. If it's ever, and the attorney too.
Do we want to discuss? Are we good? Okay, make a motion to release all funds related to the performance guarantee for 29 Wall Street?
Second.
Aye. I'm a little upset Stefan didn't come.
He was, he was busy. Yeah, he apologized.
He's on Intucket, he's busy.
I mean, after a shaky start, an exceptional project.
Yes. Yes. It took, it took a long time to get it off the ground, but it's, yeah.
It looks really good.
Yeah.
He did a great job.
So this reappoint Tom Murphy, is this, are we on our own on this now at this point? Or are we still have to do a thing with the?
No.
It's a memo from Christine about the Select Board and Planning Board have to reappoint Tom Murphy, assuming he is still willing to serve as the alternate Planning Board member. It's just a reappointment, so we don't need to have a joint meeting, but just a vote from both boards. The Select Board, this was older, so Planning to do this at their June 20 meeting, so I'm assuming they did.
Okay.
They asked Planning Board to do the same at their next meeting. Once that is done, I can send his appointment letter, and he can be sworn in and make it official.
Okay. I make a motion to reappoint Tom Murphy as an associate member of the Planning Board.
Second. You good with that, Tom?
Yes, I am.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Signing up. Anything else we can yak about, because it's not 7:15 for a public hearing?
Is Paige like listening to us? Is that how she texted you?
Yes. Not doing a snitch, but she watches every meeting of everything.
Did she do that before?
Yeah.
Yes.
Paige, we gotta talk about what you do. It's free time, need a life there, my friend. Love you. I said, "Love you."
Following in the footsteps of Leah Gibson, she watches everything.
She does?
Yeah, but has anybody called Leah out on Zoom meeting that's publicly broadcasting?
No idea.
You just did.
No, I didn't. I asked a question.
Paige just sent me a message, "I'm watching you."
Oh, we know, mommy.
So while we're killing time, I need to check your schedules, make sure that you guys are available, that everybody's gonna be available for the August meeting. We have a meeting scheduled for two weeks. I'm not sure, Bill, is your client for Seven Perry Road, can, do they need to have, do we need to have a public hearing for, in two weeks, or can they wait for August? So right now, we only have one, one hearing for, for the, the meeting in July 27th. So, but I wanted to make sure that people are available for the meeting in August.
August 10.
August 10, 10 I will be. I will be.
Three, no.
Can you check with Diane?
Well, I don't, I didn't bring my phone, otherwise I'd look at my calendar.
Yeah. Yeah, if you can just let me know tomorrow.
I might be, if, yeah, I might be heading to the Cape early, so.
Yeah. Okay.
August 10.
Yeah. Are you available, Bill?
Yep.
Thank you. Tracy, are you available?
When?
August 10.
August 10.
I have tickets to the Red Sox game.
Okay.
Do I need to be here?
They're gonna lose anyway.
It's a site plan.
It's a site plan, so I don't know. What does that mean?
Do you need me?
We, we don't need four affirmative votes for this. We can just, we have, with three, it's enough.
I usually don't go to games, but a friend's coming in from out of town.
Tom, are you available on August 10?
Don't look so happy.
You could have just said, "I'm going to the game with Tracy."
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Paige, you're mentioned in the paper. Again.
So did everybody have a, have a chance to look at the subdivision regulations before the meeting?
frightening. Very much so.
Very well done.
This is, this is a multi-year project. Bill and I started it a long time ago, pre-pandemic, and then Lance.
Black bill?
No, this bill. And then Lance was, came on board, and, and he started running with it. So it's, it's been, and Chris Gallagher's also given us input, so it's, it's been a collaborative effort.
Well, you know it's summer, huh?
Why?
Because we're just sitting there. The only people who are here are people who need to be. There'll be crowds, like.
Four minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Mine's at 7:11.
So does mine.
Mine's at 7:13.
I got 12.
Gary.
I like Diana's.
Those androids.
I'm 12, too.
You use those two terms connected?
No, 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 no. No, Mike's barely able to.
Now we pulled that meeting off at the last minute Monday night. Didn't you? Yeah, we pulled that meeting off at the last minute Monday.
Well, he's, so I get this, I tell you with the phone, but I didn't tell the G. I was like, yeah, you're family. So he's like, "I really need you to call in on something." And I'm like, "Mike, I've been leaving this room attached to an IP." He's like, "Oh, my God, I didn't realize what it was."
But then I get all the Mike Browners. "Marge is ready to get inside. We're ready to show the room."
And all of a sudden.
He's on his way. "Shit, Marge, get out of the car." Quarter of a best buy.
Didn't take long.
No. No, I wasn't going to.
Do we know when the Fox Cafe is gonna open?
No, since Chris kept it a secret that he was closing.
I know. I was in the, well, my, my ex-husband goes in there every day.
Paige briefed the other day, downtown business.
Paige, do you know when it's opening? Fox Cafe?
Fox Cafe.
You should give me your Fox.
Oh, I'll just give it to him. What do you say, Diana?
I have, um, 7:14.
We should play like Jeopardy as a entertainment thing.
We're entertaining Bill right now.
I have to, Paige says a couple of weeks.
Awesome, thank you. It's now 7:15. Go ahead.
Okay. It being honored about 7:15 PM for public hearing, special permit 127 Washington Street to expand the existing 4,000-square-foot fitness studio with a one-story 3,200-square-foot addition to the rear of the existing property submitted by RAC Properties LLC. Mr. Buckley, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bakoni Group, and I'm here representing my client, RAC Properties LLC, who's the owner of the property, as well as Crossfit Twerk, who is the tenant, actually. And Crossfit Twerk is the business that's owned by the owner of Chase Lumber, Don Chase, his daughter Amanda, and she's run it since 2013, and she's been a very successful business. And now what she would like to do is expand it. And I'm gonna put up here, share my screen, which is the rendering that you've already, you have in front of you. And so what we're, what we're looking at here is, this piece of property is, I think everybody knows it's on the, it's on the corner of Washington Street and Main Street, directly across from the Dunkin' Donuts. As I stated, it was built in 2013. It was a 4,000-square-foot building. It's all on the same lot as the Chase Lumber building, so it's one parcel of land, two addresses, though. So the existing 4,000-square-foot building, as you can see, is kinda hatched, is colored in red, and the proposed 3,200-square-foot addition is in the light brown in the rear. And I just want to point out right now, is subsequent to us preparing the site plan, the architect shifted the building 10 feet left. So there's a 10-foot jog in the back of there, which I'll show you in a moment. It doesn't change anything, the square footage of the addition stays the same, but they didn't wanna, as you look at the existing building from the street, there's some, I think it's the water or something that goes in that back right corner, that they didn't want to have to mess with. So they just slid the addition down again, which I'll show you in a moment. So the, as I said, it's currently the Chase Lumber building is on there, and that building has a, had building supplies in a retail store, and it has several accessory structures on it. So no expansion or alteration is proposed to that. We're simply talking about the existing fitness studio. So this is the design, exact same design that actually I came in, I think, in April to discuss with the board, and specifically I wanted to talk about parking. So the parking in Foxborough, there really is no parking for this type of use. So what I used is Table 6.1, which is the parking requirement. We use the wellness center criteria, which is what was put in when the YMCA use was created. Well, the fitness center is not the YMCA, it's not a wellness center, it's not an operation, 18 hours a day, continuous operation. A fitness studio is more like a, you know, an office, where people come in, they go out, there's classes, mostly in the morning, some in the afternoon, there were some specific classes, or some specific questions on the classes that were asked by the board that I actually put in my cover letter. They don't run competitions, they don't plan on running competitions, they don't anticipate an increase in the number of persons using the facility at any one time. They have limited staff, and they have a limited number of people that, you know, it's not like you go in there and there's 30 or 40 people in the class. There's two or three instructors, and maybe a dozen people from what I've seen, and from what I've done. So the parking that's currently there is more than adequate for their use based on 10 years of experience. The parking zoning requirement for the both facilities requires a total of, I think it's 79 or 80 spaces. A total of 79 spaces. So a wellness center requires 41, the retail portion of the Chase Lumber requires 32, and the storage, and shipping requires six. So what we're proposing is that there's a total of 45 paved striped spaces now in the front of the building located in front of Chase, in front of Chase Lumber, and in front of the existing studio, and there's a few on the side here. So what we're proposing in order to bring it up to a total of 40, 49, I'm sorry, 59 paved spaces, what we're proposing is to stripe 14 spaces in the back here, and that would be used by his employees if necessary. But, and so that would.
When you say his, you mean Chase Building?
Chase Building, yes. So we're talking about a total of 59. Why is that an important number? We're requesting a special permit under the section of the bylaw that allows the Planning Board to allow up to 25% less paved striped parking on a lot, and that's what we're proposing here. But we, you also have to set aside a certain amount of space that's not being built on, in case it ever has to be built on. So that portion is located in here, in kinda this brownish color. We, this is a, this is a gravel area that's currently being used now, actually, for parking, but also for display of things like sheds, stuff like that. So he could turn that into paved parking. So, but that, in my opinion, meets the criteria of the bylaw. We've showed the 75% of parking, excuse me, and we've shown we can build the additional 21 spaces, which would increase the number of spaces to 80, which is more than the 79 required.
Bill, one, what is, the brown right next to the two pink buildings, there's wording, what's that?
That is, what he's proposing is to have an, what she's proposing is exterior stone workout area. So what they do sometimes is they go out in the grass or on the pavement and do workouts out there in the nice weather. So she'll be doing that. That'll be a stone dust area where they'll do that type of work.
Bill, what is that jog in the future parking area, is that currently paved?
Are we talking about right here?
No.
No, down there.
Yeah. The gray area.
Yes.
Currently paved.
Yeah, I don't know why. Might have been a structure there sometime. But, so that, so that, as far as that's concerned, is that's the parking ask, as far as a special permit. The site is also in the Water Resource Protection Overland District, excuse me, Zone 3 to the Route 1 well. And so what that requires is more than 15% of the spa, the park, more than 15% of the lot, if more than 15% of the lot is impervious, it requires a special permit. So in this particular case, the lot is well over 15%. It's 40% impervious. This additional work will make it 41% impervious. So it requires a special permit. In order to mitigate the rendering of more than 15% impervious, what we're doing is we're taking the roof runoff and recharging it in the back of the building. And right now, as we speak, I gotta quit looking at the neighbor, because there's a delay. So in the back of the building now, so the existing building is the red, in the back, there's currently a recharge system there now. So all the roof drains, if you walk back there, you'd see all the roof drains, because the building pitches to the back. It's, and the roof drains capture it, and we infiltrate it in the back there. Or we infiltrate a certain fraction of it, not all of it. The same system will be used here. We'll be taking that out, and we'll be moving it to the side and increasing the size of it. And now that will take both of these buildings, and it will handle the runoff again. Doesn't have to take a 100-year storm, but it has to take a certain volume in order to meet the criteria. Again, the same design as the previous one. What happens other than that, for the parking, again, which we're not changing, we're just to give you a, you know, tell you what's going on, is this doesn't all drain out to Route 1. There's a catch basin down in this area here, and there's pumps. And what it does is the catch basin captures it, goes into the pump chambers, and it pumps it in the back here, where there's a drainage basin in the woods. We didn't cut all the trees down to create your basic basin. What we just did back when we built this building is we created, just created a berm back there, because everything pitches in that direction. So by putting the berm, we kinda created a natural, like a dam, like you would build a reservoir. So that, again, it doesn't change this, but that's, that's how the drainage goes. The site is currently served by a septic system located in the front yard in this area here, and a lot of the details of this are on our site plan, so I can, if we have questions after I'm done, I can just open up the site plan and show you. That system was designed to handle about 1,250 gallons per day. Over the last however many years, it's been getting about 55 gallons a day. So more than enough capacity. We'll be talking to the Board of Health about that as well. They said they couldn't find the thing, but I, I know where it is. It's under 129.
Yeah.
Right? I'm sure that's where it is. Again, it's talking about the special permit criteria. There's a lot of special permit criteria we have to meet, which I put in my memo, and I'm not gonna reread it to everybody. You can take a look at it there. But I did discuss there's no change in traffic, no change in curb cuts, so that is not an issue. The storm drain I discussed briefly talks about general purpose and harmony with the intent of the bylaws. This is in the highway business district. It's right on the edge of the S1. But if you, but it's the S1 district, so I kinda use those criteria. Promote economic development, increase real estate jack revenue, which these are the criteria I'm reading now out of the zoning. Maintain good planning and site review principles, track better land use, discourage strip or ribbon development, ensure environmental protection. So it's my opinion, this does have a positive impact. It will increase the revenue. It doesn't generate any requirement for additional town services. Socially, the use is a little, not a little different, it's no different from the existing use from the outside, which I'll show you in a moment, or is measured by its impact to the town residents. Financial viability, of course, they wouldn't be doing it if they didn't think it was viable. So I don't think it will have an impact on traffic, on storage, on stormwater, and I think it meets, it meets the criteria of meeting the, the genre of what is going on up in Route 1 in that particular area. Let me show you, I just wanna, this came in later, so it isn't in your plan set. But let me, I wanna show you what the building is going to look like, very similar to what it is.
They don't currently do any stadium parking there, do they?
No, they don't.
I didn't think so, yeah.
And it's signs that pretty much say.
Yeah.
Ugh, hate this.
This family's never wanted parking there for that.
Yeah. I don't know why.
This is a new drawing from the architect?
Yeah, this is the architect drawing, but it's just, doesn't wanna talk to me. It's crazy.
What Bill is doing that, we received two comments from departments. One of them was for the, I believe, from the fire department. They had no, no comments, no problems. And the other comment was from the Board of Health, that they couldn't locate the, the septic design. But as Bill said, we think it's because it was originally filed as 129 Washington Street, which is what the Chase Lumber is, and this application is under 127. I think there's just a mix-up in the addresses. But that's, that's all the commentary we've received.
Yeah, so let me, it's coming up here. So here is the, the building elevation. So the, the, kinda the gray out area is what's there now. And you can see the red, which matches the color of it is now. It's not exactly this color, it just comes out different on the PDF. So that's that. Let me, and you can see how it's pitched to the rear. This is looking from the south side. So if you were standing at Chase Lumber, looking toward the building, this would, this is the south side. So that's that. Let me stop sharing this for a moment and show you another drawing. Again, this is from the architect. You can see that, again, it's gray. It shows the front building is gray, but it's really not gray. So that's, that's kinda the look. You really won't see much of it. If you look at it from this side, if you were coming from the south, there's actually a line of pines. Sharon Watson, one of those. There's a line of pines, they gotta be, they gotta be 25 feet high now. And then there's, I think it's Arba Vaidi's along the front. So this doesn't show that, but that landscaping is currently there.
Bill, is the jog that you mentioned, the movement where in this photo, that he moved it so it. that he moved it so it lines up?
Yes.
Okay.
See that right there? See how he pushed it over? This is the back corner.
Yeah, now it's gonna-
Slips at that side. So that's, that was the look. And then, and again, it was for a utility reason, and I didn't find out about it until long after I had filed. So that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Bill, I think I asked this when you came in, just to discuss informally, and I forget what the answer was. So is, given that there is parking for CrossFit in the existing parking of the Chase lot, is, is that separated, or is it just kind of like all one thing and people can kind of find their own way?
It's, it's all one thing, but really, nobody uses that. There's twenty-three parking spaces around the CrossFit building, and that's more than adequate for the activities that she does. So, but because it's one lot, we just lump all the parking together.
Okay.
And frankly, I just, my own personal experience of doing business with the Chase family up there, the front lot right in front of their showroom is hardly ever full. Most of the, most of the people who are doing business there have an order that's in. They drive around the building to the other side. They pick it up, wood or, you know, materials, whatever it might be. And then, you know, they sign for the slip inside and they leave. So, I mean, I don't think I've ever seen that lot right in front of the showroom full. I mean, there's definitely cars there, especially people who go in with like a designer for kitchen or, you know, tile or something like that, hardware that they're going to buy for, for cabinetry and things like that. So, I mean, and I look at this also and just say, how long has his, his daughter owned this, this CrossFit?
Ten years.
Ten years. So I mean, obviously, she's had a positive track record, there have been no issues, and now she wants to expand her business. I, I look at that as a positive. And I think that, you know, the plan addresses whatever it needs to, including potential future parking, which we've done in town at other locations, some of which have never needed to be built, but the, but the land is always still there for them. I don't, I mean, personally, I don't see many issues with this.
I don't, I agree with you. Kevin?
Nope, no brainer.
You need a motion? Why do you have to close the public hearing?
Any, any further questions before we close the public hearing?
No.
Uh, no. I assume that the plans themselves will have to be redone to-
Yes, I'll, I'll change the site plan that you have in order to shift the building over to the left before we bring it in for signature.
Yeah, we'll, we'll add that as a condition.
So then, do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Move, I move.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve submitted. I think the one condition that Kavi's got.
And with standard conditions for site plans. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it being sometime past seven twenty-five PM, we have public hearing for subdivision rules and regulations. That's it, great.
Yes.
Okay. Hello, how are you?
Hey.
Just want to tell you, you have a page eighteen where there should have been a period after Section four oh eight. There should be a comma there.
Do you want me to hit him?
Take those tickets away from me for that game.
So like I said earlier in the meeting, this is something that's been in the works for quite a long time. Phil and I started, Bill Buckley and I started the, the project before the pandemic, and then it got halted, and then Lance joined, and he's done quite a bit of work on it too. So the, the planning board is the, the board that adopts these regulations. It doesn't need to go to town meeting because it's not a zoning matter. Currently, the subdivision rules and regs are not part of the, of the code of the town. They're waiting for us to finish this revision before adding it to the code. But after this, this is approved and, you know, it will be part of the, the code of the town as well.
It seemed, for the most part, it was just updating in household.
Yeah.
Clean up.
Yeah, a lot of that.
Anything, what, what would you consider the more substantial of the changes?
Any comments? I, I think that one of the big, the bigger things that, that were done was about storm water. Because of our storm water regulations, we needed to be, you know, on par with what has been adopted in the past. You know, that has been modernized. We had to do some additional things, like adding the, the central mailbox, which is now something that the, the post office is requiring.
Who his? Who his?
Yes, who his. And, and, and one of the things that we wanted to discuss with, with you is the, I'm sorry, I'm looking for it right now, is the requirement to, to do a homeowners association for the maintenance on some of the items in the subdivision. I was, I was talking with Jeff prior to the meeting. I'm sorry, this is in page fourteen. Section four oh four.
Four oh four is fifteen, or four oh three?
Where are we going?
I, I thought it was fifteen, actually.
I'm sorry, okay, so four, uh, four oh four.
Right, yeah.
On page.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Got it.
So one, one of the, the things that, that, you know, that we, I was talking with Jeff about is, is that there are things that right now have fallen through the cracks. One of them is the subdivisions, like on Sullivan Way off of Chestnut Street, there's a long strip of road before getting to the first houses. There, we, we never contemplated who would maintain that area. And, you know, for the most part, the, the town, the, the Highway Department cannot be doing them all the time. So they get done, I'm not sure.
Is that an accepted way, or is it a private way?
It's, it's an accepted way.
We have the same, we have the same issue at the end of Van Dorn and Weston. And I will tell you that the builder of that area, I, I agree that there needs to be a homeowners association language, but I think we might want to tighten it a bit to, because if I showed you the homeowners association agreement that we have, it's a joke, and it's not binding. So if it's, it checks the box, but it doesn't really accomplish and give weight to what the-
So is this going to create a situation that every subdivision's going to have to have a homeowners association?
Well, that's, that's what we're discussing, because one other thing that right now is facing is that, that, that boo his mailbox, that right now, we have two subdivisions that were required to do that, but this was, the requirement was after we have granted those, those permits. And so right now, there is nowhere that says who will maintain those. And the town cannot take responsibility for maintaining them, but right now, the, the neighborhood doesn't have any, you know, any requirement to, to maintain them. So that's another thing that we really need to-
Wouldn't that fall under like a mailbox, though? Like, if my mailbox gets whacked over by the town, it's on, or my neighbor hits it, it's on me. So why wouldn't even-
But if it's, if it's a disrepair, if it goes like, you know, ten years from now, if it's, if it's in a bad shape, who's going to replace it?
If they don't put it underneath, let's say, under, underneath like some kind of a pergola or something like that, and the, the moisture gets to it, and all the boxes start to get pitted and whatever.
Anything that happens to it.
Because, because the developer was the one that installed them.
Right. Is there a way, I, I do think there needs to be language, but is there a way that we could have an example or a template that has to be utilized? That, so we are ensuring that it's legally binding and that it also covers the shared mailboxes, the basins, or whatever that we need to-
Yeah, and that's something that we talked about consulting with, with Town Council about it. We were not able to connect with him. But that is something, you know, we have in the, in the appendices, we have the forms, you know, for the, for applications, for the performance guarantee, for, you know, truparitide agreement. So I think that that's something that we could include as part of, you know, the appendices is a sample of, you know, what a homeowners association document would look like.
Because I showed you the one I have.
I've seen it, I've seen it, yes.
And, and getting back to the water thing, so I know that when John was on the board, he paid a lot of attention to the new federal and state regulations that were coming down the pike. Are these, this, this document's going to address more of that, the way, way it might have been? Or it supersedes what we have been doing in order to make that more correct?
You mean for the, the storm water?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this has to do with, you know, MS four, so.
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, which is what John was talking about at the time, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, a lot of the stuff got added even before. I think a large part of the storm water section may have been added before I even stepped into this. But I don't think, I mean, it, it circles back to the, you know, you did, the storm water regulations were approved like two years ago.
Right.
And, you know, this also loops into that, you know, you know, so they had certain standards that need to be upheld. Bill, do you have any insight when that was put in?
No, we already worked this all out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any, any other comments or questions? Bill, do you want to add anything?
The only thing I would add is I want to go back to the homeowners association. You know, every project is different. So this gives you the authority, says the HOA document shall be submitted to and approved by the planning office. So every project is different, you know, like you know, Link, Athlet and Peterson have that low-impact development in the middle there.
Right.
Basically, the little islands. Well, who's going to take care of those? Nobody. But that has, they have a homeowners association. Other subdivisions might not have that. So that's, so I mean, it's, it's not-
Like Lawton Farms, are they gonna, are they gonna, will they fall under this?
They're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to do a homeowners association here because they have the mailboxes. And they also are going to have the islands in the middle. But some subdivisions won't. So that's why I mean, you have the authority to do it. You can look at it, send it to Town Council, build it.
I would like to have like at least a template to work off of that has, understanding we would, it could be tweaked, but like at least a foundation for a developer to work off of. Because we, we had so much trouble in Governor's Meadow.
Well, the, the, for, for the for the, the duplex that we did on Main Street, Joe Lynch did that. Part of the, the conditions was that they had to do, the content documents had to be approved by the planning office, by, by Town Council, basically. And I think that, you know, maybe that's something, so that it's, is something that is, gets reviewed. So even if we don't have a template, it gets reviewed by Town Council. And it, that's a requirement. It's, it's not, you know, it's not something that, you know, Joe Schmoke and just write and say, this is your homeowners association. It would actually has to be a legal document that has to be approved by, by our, our attorney.
So in a situation like, like that one on Main Street or Community Way, that are, that are affordable housing components, does that negate or change anything that's in these regulations, or no?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Can you just clarify one thing? Because, Bill, you were just talking about, and I know you're using it, Lawton as an example. But are we suggesting that, and that's an approved subdivision. I know we haven't signed off on everything yet. But are you suggesting that we, in certain cases, would be retroactively applying?
No, no.
It may do it themselves at some point. I mean, there's going to come a need in the near future, you know, for some of these people to-
No, I understand.
You know.
In fact, I remember like some time ago, I mean, probably a decade ago, but long, long decades after Dudley Hill was constructed, the homeowners got together to reconstruct their little, you know, signage entryways at both ends. So, I mean, sometimes people have the wherewithal to do that.
That's what we did in Governor's Meadow.
Not so much.
And, and I, I need to point out that, that the language here says the board may require the creation. It's not like it's, you know, that, that you're going to do it for every, every instance. But, you know, we, we want to open it so that it is, if it's necessary, then we will, you know, exercise that. Because it might, it might be a small subdivision that, that, you know, will not have the, the, the central mailbox, will not have, you know, a lot of, you know, the low, low-density stuff, so they might not need it.
I know, I think it's a good idea.
What do you do in the case where the homeowners refuse to form an association?
I think it's, the, the developer would have to put that in the closing documents.
It's a de restriction.
It does not make them form, it tells them they have to. It does not force them to form.
But here, here's-
Washburn is prime example.
But there's an incentive to, to form something, because like if we hadn't formed it in Governor's Meadow, the, I mean, we haven't done the entrances yet, but like all of the common land would be like a friggin' forest. It would be, it would look like crap. So there's an incentive for the homeowners to come together in some way, whether it's a legal homeowners association, or it's just ours, which is a little flimsy one. But we have a bank account and-
Washburn has nothing.
Where's Washburn?
Four houses, five houses, they refuse to form one.
Where's Washburn?
Up off of one oh six.
Does it look like crap?
Right after they have the-
Yeah, it's starting to get overgrown. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, the reason they do it is because there's a retention basin there.
We have two. We have two in Governor's Meadow.
It's exceptionally deep. It's very steep on the sides, the banking, and it's very deep, and they don't want the liability.
Well, they don't have any insurance. Then they can't afford insurance.
So that's why they refuse to form it. And that was a big to-do there a number of years ago.
I do think retention basins need to be maintained by the town. That's my own personal feeling, because A, people don't know what needs to be done unless you're, you're involved in the development of them and stuff. Twenty cents. I see us clean out the basin, and I know they're not doing it as they should be. I'm not going to complain.
Are there, you know, are there situations now where they're just not getting the, you know, the, the tree and land, the tree and Park Division can't get to those, or whatever?
We, we don't have the staff to-
That's what I thought.
Clean them off effectively. You know, it's, it's, especially Tree and Park these days, they just demand, you know, the unregulate, you know, the unfunded mandates just continue to increase. And, you know, they have cleaning, you know, dams and watering the basins, and not to mention just all the aesthetic sort of, you know, common maintenance and the fields and all that stuff. So, demand continues to increase and-
I bet Bob Bodie would take this on.
I just said, we should maybe get, get, get involved. Is it possible to have Tree and Park be responsible for it? And in the deed, that they would be billed by the town as necessary?
You mean the homeowners would be billed by the town?
I'm not sure how that would legally work. I mean, it doesn't increase our availability, you know, whether or not they pay us back. It doesn't increase-
No, but it's compensation, which then in turn allows possibly staffing, so.
I'm not sure how that would work legally in terms of, you know, us directly charging, you know, a group of homeowners that way. It's not, not a situation that can count. Yeah, I mean-
You're charging a homeowner for property tax, so you're doing that for maintenance.
But here's, and here's the thing, I mean, if there's, like, we kick in, each household kicks in X number of dollars per year, and then if that was legal to do, I don't know if it is, then like I pay our, our lawn person, like our common area who takes care of it, I write a check. It'd be just, so here's the thing, you know, is it, the legality, is it something for the town to do? Or do they do what we did and just go hire somebody, like a landscaping company, to take care of it?
My two cents on that would be, if I'm not mistaken, those are all on private land. Therefore, they're not the responsibility of the town to take care of.
But it's, no.
Nor does the town have the right to.
Okay, so if you go down Van Dorn, when you first, no, Weston, on the left, there's a basin.
Yes.
That's nobody's property. I've looked at the plots.
It's gotta be Speed's property.
It's gotta be, yeah, somebody has to own it.
I can jump in on that.
Okay, please.
Where we're required to, as part of the subdivision documents, it's called a conveyance of easements and utilities. So even though, on, there's two on, what's the one behind Eric, Weston? So there's one at the beginning, and there's one at the end.
Behind the crop.
Behind somebody's house.
Yeah.
And then down near where you live, there's one over on the left side.
Yes.
Down past your house and behind the house, there's another big one there. They're on private property, but, but the developer was required to sign an easement over to the town that allows the town to access and maintain it. So this, for every project, it's called a conveyance of easements and utilities.
So if that's done, why isn't the town maintaining it?
They don't have the staff.
Okay, well then, we've got to fix some part of this process, we either got to figure out how to staff it, or stop giving a conveyance.
Well, the alternative is what, what Lance just brought up is, which irritates me, because I just got my tax bill, but, um, you know, the, um...
Didn't we all?
Is that you put it into a homeowners association, and then they're responsible to maintain it. For the most part, the maintenance isn't hard, it's just, it's just not a big deal.
Our houses, we have 26 houses, 24 houses, we put, I think everyone puts like 250, 300, and we've done it for a while, we've got like a bank account with like almost 20 grand in it.
Yeah. I would be surprised if it cost you $1,000 a year.
I would agree.
To do, to do that, to do what we're talking about now, you know, um...
Because it's really just a landscaper could clean the...
It's a landscaper.
Yeah.
And every once in a while, you have to replace, like for the tree box filters, you gotta replace the mulch and stuff, or if a tree dies.
Here's the thing, though, the one, like, you know that, and we know that, but...
The landscapers might not.
But the landscapers might not, I, it would be good to say, to provide them, like, here's the expectations.
There is one.
Yes, operations.
Everyone that you, every plan that you approve has an operations and maintenance plan for construction, for construction and for long-term operation. So you, you approve one...
Right, but it's in a file here, it's not, it's not the homeowners association. So, you know, it, it, I'm not, I'm not making an excuse for it, but it's gotta be in the right place so that they can hire the contractor, so that he or she knows exactly what's required.
Maybe what Tracy's talking about that is, is a good idea, is that, is that part, I'll tell you what some towns do now, is they make us record at the registry, the operation and maintenance plan. I don't know what that proves, but it's recorded, but maybe if it was a homeowners association...
But unless Kevin Guarini goes to the, to the state registry, he's not gonna know.
But I would say that if there's a legal entity of a homeowners association, the doc, that doc, they could, we could require that that document gets, gets shared, presented to the homeowners association, and then it's the homeowners association's responsibility to give it to Guarini.
Yeah, right, and that's, that's what you can do, is you could take the operation and maintenance plan, it's, you approve, and the consultant or Lance has approved.
Can you say mine?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, um, and then you could be making part of your homeowners association. And it, it's a living document too, because...
Things change.
Rules, things change, right.
Now, if the basin fails...
Whose fault, who do they go after?
Whose fault is it, and who has to rush down there and correct it?
It would be the, the homeowners association would have to do it, because what typically will happen is, as you just pointed out, is these things just don't get maintained. So they clog. If it's an infiltration basin, which almost all of them are, they'll clog, and so you need to go in there, what you can do is you can disc it up, you can, um, disc it up, and you can put in a, a sand fill, um, mixture on the bottom and run it down.
A homeowner, general homeowner wouldn't know that, so like, and I don't know if Guarini, somebody like Guarini would know that.
They would, but they would pick up the phone and call an engineer, or call the town, and they would discuss it with them. You know who I talked to, or stuff like that? The, the guy who runs the Foxborough Country Club. Brilliant, you know, he knows all of that, I mean, think about it, how he keeps those greens looking so good, how they drain so well. So he's, so there, there are people out there, you're right, Joe homeowner wouldn't, but that's not his job. The information's out there, you can get it. That being said, it irritates me that you pay all this money in taxes, and yet you still have to pay something extra. But I understand the issue. The alternative is to hire more people, and more cost, and more overhead, so...
I think you should tell, you know, Stanton he got to have some money.
That was a good discussion, Gabby.
Well, thank you.
Are we good, are we supposed to do anything?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I need, we need...
Okay, what do you need?
You need a vote to, um, adopt the revised subdivision rules and regulations. Just, just for clarification, we only worked on the narrative part, there's still the appendices, there's, um, you know, figures, illustrations of, of different things that we need to revise, you know, modernize, because a lot of them are hand-drawn, um, so this is something that, that's our next step.
Okay.
But this is, so I would appreciate if you could, um, vote to approve the revised...
After we close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to adopt the modernized and updated subdivision...
Subdivision, hold on.
Rules and regulations. Rules and regulations.